Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council's special meeting for this Monday, December 18, 2023. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Ella has been excused. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
President.
You have a forum?
Well, thank you very much. And has been our tradition for many a meeting, please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in recognition of the significant contributions of our men and women serving this great nation in our armed services both here and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all very much for joining us tonight, and for those of you at home joining us, welcome. This is a single-purpose meeting to say goodbye and farewell, but not forever, to Councilmember, former Mayor Don Anderson, our friend and colleague for 16 years here in the city of Lakewood. I want to welcome all of you and special welcome to our distinguished guest, Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland. Thank you. Good to see you, always a friend of the great city of Lakewood. And to Don and Nancy's family, welcome to see all of you here and the grandchildren. So it makes these days memorable and certainly worthwhile. We have representatives from our 2-2 Striker Brigade Community Connector here. We've got Colonel Gallo and Command Sergeant Major Latham. Thank you very much for attending tonight. We very much appreciate that. And I'm sure we have other folks here that will be recognized as we go through the comments tonight. But I just really appreciate all of you coming to celebrate the great contributions that Don has made for the last 16-plus years here in the city of Lakewood. Special thank you and welcome to Councilmember-elect Ryan Pearson. I think that there's a connection somehow here in the family, so I want to extend my well wishes to you as you take the oath in a few short weeks, so we look forward to that. So as we start this session on our proclamation and presentation, our singular proclamation tonight, we want to recognize Don for his service to the city of Lakewood, and we have a special proclamation that I'll lead over at the podium. As we love to do when we do proclamations of this magnitude, all councilmembers have a voice, and all councilmembers will share their voice in issuing the proclamation to Don. So Don, it is with great pleasure that we join in our unique and diverse voices, unified as one, as we present this proclamation tonight to you, along with a few other ancillary beautiful gifts and tokens of our esteemed appreciation. Councilmember Branstadter, please start us off.
City of Lakewood proclamation. Whereas Don Anderson has served the city of Lakewood with distinction and professionalism since January 2008, serving his first five years as deputy mayor before becoming mayor in January 2013, a position he held until January 2022. And whereas Anderson's meritorious service to the city of Lakewood totals 16 years and demonstrates the highest level of dedication and excellence, and...
Whereas he has represented the city on the Association of Defense Communities Board of Directors, the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, Elected Officials Council, the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board, the Pierce Transit Board of Directors, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And whereas throughout his long and distinguished career, Anderson's civic and community involvement included serving as board president of Goodwill of the Olympics and Rainier Region, president of the Puyallup School District Board, and board president of the Friends of American Lake Veterans Golf Course. And whereas Anderson demonstrated thoughtful leadership and strong vision as he helped orchestrate a number of city policy priorities from conception through completion, and...
And whereas recognizing the economic and strategic significance of Joint Base Lewis McCord, Anderson played a key role, key leadership role, in the creating of South Sound Military and Community Partners, SSMCP, which provides a framework for collaboration in the South Sound region between local government, military, which provides a framework for collaboration in the military installations, and state and federal agencies to better coordinate efforts in the area of military relations. And whereas Anderson advocated at the state and federal level and was instrumental in obtaining nearly $500 million for creating improvements to the Interstate 5 corridor adjacent to Joint Base Lewis McCord and multiple agencies funding commitments for McCord Field, whose own property acquisition. And whereas Anderson developed and strengthened relationships with Lakewood's community connectors, the 2-2 Striker Brigade Combat Team, and the 62nd Air Lift Wing, the 7th Infantry Division, the 1st Corps Headquarters, and the Washington National Guard, and...
Whereas Anderson deserves particular respect for his efforts supporting service members and their families, which has been recognized by the induction into the Order of St. Maurice by the National Infantry Association and selection to the Joint Base Lewis McCord Civilian Hall of Fame. And whereas, under Anderson's leadership, the city partnered with Habitat for Humanity to build healthy and affordable housing in the Lakewood community, which has changed lives and improved neighborhoods. And whereas, Don Anderson has supported economic development initiatives, the local business community, public park investments, including needed restroom facilities, familiar to us as Don's John, workforce development, education, and housing programs. And now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby expresses its sincere gratitude and respect to Don Anderson for his dedication, character, and professionalism during his many years of service to the Lakewood City Council, the residents of the city of Lakewood, and Greater Pierce County. And we congratulate him as he transitions to the next phase of his fulfilling life and career. Reclaiming this 18th day of December, 2023, all of us sitting on the city council. So Don, come on up, and we're going to give you your proclamation. And we've also got a wonderful plaque in recognition of your service and leadership. And just so everyone else kind of knows what's going to go on here, we're going to call on the city manager to quickly present a token of appreciation as well. And then I will extend the opportunity for all of you who wish to say a few words about Don, to Don, against Don, for Don, whatever you'd like to do, and then I'm going to turn it over to councilmembers. But I do, Don, want to recognize Colonel Park, our Garrison Commander here tonight from JBLM. Thank you very much. And David Fulmer, the JBLM Chief of Staff. Gentlemen, thank you again for cementing the connection we have with JBLM. And certainly, Don has been very much a part of that. So Don?
Thank you.
Your proclamation. We're going to get a photograph of all of us, but I guess we can do a quick one here. And hold on to that. But wait, there's more, as they say. The official plaque. To Don Anderson, mayor from 2013 to 2022, deputy mayor from 2008 to 2013, and councilmember from 2022 to 2023. In honor and sincere appreciation of your exceptional leadership and outstanding service to the Lakewood community, your hard work and dedication have contributed to the success of those around you and to this great city as a whole.
Thank you.
So now you get to stand here while the city manager comes up, not for his evaluation, but to give you yet another token of his appreciation.
I want to call you mayor. We're just talking about that. So I'm just going to go with it, Mayor Anderson, if that's okay. Because during my tenure at the city, he has been the longest-serving mayor that I have had a chance to serve with. So we have a presentation of the Key to the City. Presentation of the Key to the City, it's a symbolic gesture that carries significant historical and ceremonial importance. This tradition dates back to medieval times, when cities were surrounded by walls and gates for protection. The key symbolized the freedom of the recipient to be able to leave and enter the city at will, signifying trust and honor. And because of this, it is with great honor and profound respect that we, the city of Lakewood, present to you this key to the city. It is a testament to the trust and the esteem we hold for you. The symbolic gesture is a small token of our immense gratitude for your dedicated service, your unwavering commitment, and the invaluable contributions during your tenure on the city council as the mayor, the deputy mayor, and councilmember. Your tireless efforts have significantly shaped our community, bringing about meaningful change and progress. Your wisdom, your leadership, and your passion for public service has not only inspired your colleagues, but also deeply impacted the lives of our residents, making it a better place for all who live and work here. And as you embark on the next chapter of your life, please know that your legacy is going to continue here at the city of Lakewood. It will resonate. And may this key serve as a reminder of our enduring appreciation of the indelible mark that you have left on our community, and we wish you all the very best, knowing that your contributions will be long remembered and celebrated. So with that, the key is presented to the Don Anderson for your exceptional leadership and commitment to public service, dated this December 18, 2023.
I think this is the second one.
This is the second one? So not only does the first one not open anything, this one doesn't open anything either.
No, second, yeah. The first one was Jermaine Curse.
Well, that's actually correct. That's actually correct. So Don Anderson is only the second recipient of the Key to the City. So you're in good company there, which you're in Jermaine Curse.
I think the janitor was the first one.
Doug got the in-laid plaque, though. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you, Mr. Caulfield, and I want to recognize Doug Richardson, our esteemed councilmember, former mayor, former county councilmember. Thank you for coming. You'll have a chance. But I first want to call on Councilwoman Strickland to present some remarks to Don. Yeah.
I thought you'd be sitting over there, so I'll just...
You can come on up here, Don. Yeah, you can be in the gallery with the rest of us here.
Yes, then I'll have you walk over for the presentation, the whole formality of it. Well, I am here today to honor and thank Mayor Don Anderson, because as I say to folks, once a mayor, always a mayor. And that holds true, because even in the halls of Washington, D.C., there are people who say "mayor," and about a dozen of us turn around, so that's how they get our attention. But you know, I think about where we are today when it comes to politics and how divided things can be. And then I think about the privilege of serving in local government, where we're not partisans, we're people who want to do the work. And I remember Don and I first met each other, I think, on the board of Pierce Transit. And often, we were not in agreement. And we had a day-long retreat, and Don and I were in the same group, and we had to select priorities for a system that was really struggling with resources. Well, it turned out that Don and I had exact priorities. We matched completely. And that really started the relationship that we started to form over time. I remember when Pierce Transit was going through some leadership challenges, and we had to find an interim director. And I ran into James Walton, who's the former city manager of Tacoma, in a parking lot at a grocery store. And I came back to the board meeting and said, "I think Jim Walton should be our interim manager." And without hesitation, Don Anderson said, "He should, because he's the perfect fit, because I've served with him." The point I'm trying to make is this: Don Anderson, as a leader, has always known the assignment. And the assignment is to help the community and to make things better for the people that he serves. Through his work serving Joint Base Lewis McCord, to always correcting me when I understate the economic impact on Washington State, to always understanding that representing a majority-minority city in the state of Washington has a lot of responsibilities and a lot of constituents who want a lot of things, but requires you to sit down, to listen, and to understand that your job is to represent all people. I ran into Don at Rotary 8 when I didn't know him that well, and he said, "Are you Doug Irwin's daughter-in-law?" And it turned out we knew each other that way, because he went to University of Oregon with my mother-in-law, but he also knew my former father-in-law through work that they did in the community. So this University of Washington Husky is proud to honor this Oregon duck. Thank you on behalf of Lakewood. Thank you on behalf of Pierce County. Thank you on behalf of our state and our nation. We are a stronger community because of you, Lakewood on an amazingly stronger path because of you. And I want to present you with this flag that was flown at the U.S. Capitol in your honor. Thank you, Mayor Anderson, for so many years of service, and we're with you during your next chapter.
Thank you, Congresswoman. It's great to see you. Thank you very much for your words and for coming tonight. And now I'm going to open up the podium for those members of the public, members of our Community Connector. If you'd like to say a few words, feel free to kind of queue up. And then when folks in the audience have finished having a few words, then councilmembers will have their opportunity, and then we'll take a few photographs and enjoy some refreshments. So whoever would like to be next to say anything, you're certainly welcome to do so. And if not, well, then we'll proceed with council. Welcome. Ms. Rudolph?
Hello. I'm Catherine Rudolph, and I have the pleasure right now of working with Don Anderson on the Pierce County Executive Team. And I've also had the opportunity to work with him for a long time in my previous role as the Government Affairs Director for the Tacoma Pierce County Association of Realtors. And I've watched him work his way through a lot of naughty, meaning K-N-O-T-T-Y. Although he may have his naughty moments. Work through some really naughty issues and do them very well. And the joke in my head is always that, who is Don Anderson? Well, he's a man who's a weighty individual. He provides ballast. And he also tells the story about having fallen off of a ledge when he was a child and having fallen on his head. And I always say when he tells that story, "Well, you hit the hardest part. It's all good." And I'm sure the rock broke, so that's the bottom line. But he works very hard. He thinks very well. He's patriotic. He's kind. And all of us who know how he feels about his family know he's a big softie. And so I appreciate you, Don, and I've enjoyed working with you for a long time. And I think people of Lakewood have been very well-served by your presence here.
Thank you.
Great. Again, I don't have a sign and sheet, so feel free to queue up. Edith, good to see you.
Good evening, council. I'm Edith Owen Wallace, and I'm the Chair for the Human Services Advisory Citizens Committee for the city, for the council. Been on that board a long time. However, we've never had the question that's... Councilman Anderson is going to come back and pick. He comes back and says, "Good job. Thank you for the support for human, for our neighbors that live in this city." Thank you.
Thank you, Edith. Mayor Richardson?
For the record, Doug Richardson, Lakewood resident. And back when I was the mayor, we couldn't afford a wall, so we didn't have any keys to give away. No, Don, you know, Don's only had, like, I guess this is your third chair since you were on the council that you sat in. I think they were going to retire the other two for most years of service in that particular chair. But Don came on to the city council at kind of a tumultuous time, I would say, politically in the city. And from the first day he was elected, he was unanimous choice to be deputy mayor of Lakewood and served in that capacity until 2013, when he became the mayor of the city, and then served in that capacity for another nine years. So he certainly has been at the forefront of a lot of things that have happened in the city. And I guess I'm most proud. They mentioned JBLM is here this evening. But the way he took ownership of the whole relationship with JBLM, and particularly the involvement nationally, I think you served on the board, did you not? Yeah. So we went to the Defense Communities Forum back in 2004, or whatever it was. But anyway, he took that ball and ran with it, and as I said, served on the board for many years. Actually, I'm very serious tonight, but you're a serious person. So I used to joke when I was the mayor that I had the opportunity to sit between two lawyers, Don on one side and Jason on the other. And every time a subject came up, I got dueling R-CWs from either side before the city attorney could say anything. So that's always been a delightful memory of mine. And the joke we had for a long time is that every mayor in Lakewood's name end in sun, because we changed Claudia Thomas's name to Claudia Thomason to fit between Bill Harris and myself, Don Anderson. So Jason Whalenson, we're glad that you've taken the position as mayor, but I noticed your name card is incomplete. But I also have to say, Don and I keep following each other around. The most recent following around is we chase different grandchildren at the same school. So I usually run into Don at some particular forum at that school. But anyway, I'll cut it off by saying the city of Lakewood has been very well-benefited from the service of Don Anderson on the city council. The running joke in his family was Nancy would answer the phone and tell Don his boyfriend was on the phone, because Don and I talked quite often when I was on the city council. So it wasn't true, but that's what was said. Anyway, Don, I want to thank you personally for all that you've done. Thank you for wearing reading glasses when I forgot mine, so that I had a pair. And if it wasn't reading glasses, it was usually a pen. So very much appreciated. You should be very proud of your service to the city, and the residents should all be very, very excited that you've provided that level of service, and wish you Godspeed in your retirement.
Thanks, Don.
So Mayor Anderson, actually, I'm here on behalf of Lieutenant General and Mayor Emeritus Bill Harrison. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it here this evening, but he wished that I pass along his heartfelt thanks to you for everything that you have done for the Lakewood community and always being a voice of reason and just being a beacon for Lakewood as a whole and everything that you have done. He also wanted me to pass on in particular, particularly your service and support of JBLM, the service members, our veterans, their families, and everything that is JBLM and the military here in our region. And he further just wishes his very best to you and to your beautiful family and wishes you the very best, and he hopes to be able to see you sometime soon. So that is on, again, behalf of General Harrison.
Thank you. Well, unless there are any others in the audience to say a few words, I'll turn it over to council, and maybe I can start with Councilmember Branstadter.
Mr. Mayor. Don, I have to say that I would look, and I look back on my 14 years, and I see that you have been the glue that has kept us as a council as a strong functioning body. I think that by your example and your expectations, you have infused in us that we're not caretakers, but we are here to move the city forward and make it better, but that we do that with civility, but with candor in the way that we interact with each other. And I think that that has done a lot to perhaps set Lakewood apart from some other communities where that has not always been evident. And I think you were the catalyst for that, the positive things that we've been able to do during your tenure. And thank you.
Councilmember Bokey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don, you know, I just, when I think about over the years, you did a great job as mayor, really, and I think even tempered, even keel, very consistent approach to the job of being on the city council. You always had the best interests of Lakewood in mind through everything. And I almost always knew where you stood. You could, because you worked so hard for the city, and there was a deep understanding, and you had so much knowledge of the issues. It was, you knew where you were at. You didn't move around a lot on issues. And I really did appreciate that consistent approach. I think it allowed us as a council to really gel and get a lot of things done over the last few years. city. And I, I see that and I hear that from everything that you've done, and I wish I could have more years sitting next to you on either side to learn from you even more. So I will miss you dearly. I hope that your replacement is half as entertaining as you are.
Yeah.
So that I'm not sure. So, okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Don, I want to thank you for helping me to transition from the private sector into government. You did a great job of that. Our first event was not the best, not something that we were looking forward to when we had to say goodbye to our fallen heroes of Lakewood. But your leadership taught me a lot. I learned how to agree and disagree, but yet do what's best for our city. So I appreciate you for that and appreciate the dates that we had when Nancy wasn't available. I will miss those days, but good luck to you. I hope, I'm sure we'll see you around. But thank you for everything you've done and the love that you shared for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss. Well, we're going to have a roast with, you know, several other folks to come, but it is kind of a long and stormy night, so all you have is us. Yeah, Don Rickles wasn't available, Dean Martin either. Don, you know, our history now stems back 30 years, 30-plus years. In 1992, I remember coming to your esteemed corner office at Eisenhower Carlson to interview for a job. And, you know, thereafter, I worked for and with you for 21 years as a colleague and law partner, and it was a great, great time. And then during that time, of course, we chatted about politics and all things local government for quite a while, and we embarked on this sort of public service adventure somewhat together. I had the pleasure of serving as your deputy mayor, and we served during our time at Eisenhower for a period of years as deputy mayor and mayor to the chagrin of our law partners, many of whom thought our time could have been better spent. But nonetheless, you had a singular purpose to move the ball forward for Lakewood, and I really have honored that, honored that tenacity and that professional approach and the desire to move Lakewood forward by encouraging Lakewood to become a regional player in many, many things and always fight above its weight when possible. And some of our greatest successes were certainly due to your leadership and your steadfast hand on the helm as we moved the ball forward. And as you often have said, we serve and desire to pick up much more than we leave down and leave this place in a much better position than we found it. Many of the work items that you accomplished will have lasting impact. I mentioned Don's John, and I think that has had a lasting impact on many. And I know that that was important for you to get done for Nancy's benefit, to show that you actually could get something accomplished in local government, and in fact, you did. And now Don's John has been replicated a few times here in the great city of Lakewood, and we thank you for that. You've created value for our residents through the incredible work and stewardship on the parks programs, the infrastructure improvements, and as noted tonight by many, through the steadfast and improved relationship with Joint Base of the Marine Corps and our Community Connector. And that has been surprising for a Navy guy, frankly, because this is an Army installation, Don. I just want you to remember that, you know? We do know that Army still beats Navy on occasion. Yeah. So next year, okay. Beyond city work and beyond our work together, one thing that I've really very much enjoyed was watching your commitment to our ball team. Your four, my three. So great family guy, great mentor, great leader, great mayor, great Navy aficionado, and above it all, an incredible, incredible faithful servant to the city. So well done, good and faithful servant. We appreciate you. The floor is yours.
John said we had to give up the room by 9:30.
Yeah, 9:30, exactly.
So much has happened. I did write a few things down as notes, but this is not going to be long. First, thanks. Thanks for all the kind words tonight. Thanks first and foremost to the people of Lakewood for giving me this opportunity. Thanks to the city manager and wonderful staff of the city of Lakewood for accomplishing everything that's merely an idea when it's at council. Thanks to my fellow council members for coming up with synonyms for stubborn. But thanks, thanks for all you do, and I'm confident we're leaving the city in good hands. And thanks to my family for putting up with all this. But it's really been a great opportunity to serve for 16 years. You know, our country is polarized politically. Congress is stalemated on all sorts of important issues. Legislators in Olympia come up with one-size-fits-all solutions that don't fit and aren't solutions. Courts enter the leadership vacuum and decide their legislators. But Lakewood has shown that local government can work. And what's happened in the last 16 years has been amazing. I wish I could take credit for it, but this has been a team effort of the council, the staff, and the community. What's happened in the last 16 years since I came on? We dedicated a new police station. It wasn't quite done. Finalized the PAC Highway improvements. Public Works has its own yard facility. Too many road projects to count. Bridgeport, Veterans, Stillicum, Washington Boulevard. We were instrumental in facilitating the I-5 JBLM corridor improvements, which wasn't even on the DOT radar when we started advocating for it. Sidewalks all over town provide safety for pedestrians. Hundreds and hundreds of streetlights provide safety for neighborhoods. Hundreds, wait, you don't see hundreds and hundreds of modern storm drains that provide safety for our lakes and environment. Public safety. Crime is down over the 16 years. I have to get my last dig in. Unfortunately, the recent trend, which I lay flatly in the legislature's lap, is negative, but we're still outperforming our peers and being leaders in trying to move to corrective action. Parks. I think parks has probably been one of the most impressive achievements. Mary Dodd's worth sitting back here, Energizer Bunny. We've obtained ownership and put substantial improvements into Fort Stillicum Park, including the pavilion. Now there's a new stadium going in, and hopefully the barns will be restored, H-Barn will be restored. We've effectively created a park from scratch at Springbrook. And if you haven't been by there lately, you should be because it's been totally redone. It's gone through like four iterations of expansion. We expanded Woods Lake. All over town, there are new docks, restrooms, landscaping, play equipment clear across the system. We have both enhanced Summerfest and created new community events that are free and attract thousands of people. We have deals in the work with the state to gain ownership of historic Fort Stillicum Officers' Borders, some of the oldest buildings in the state, the region, and to get control of the Stillicum boat launch to improve that. We've established a strong fiscal position. 16 years ago, I was shocked to find that the city's checkbook hadn't been balanced for six months. We have built reserves, created transparency. Our staff has won national awards and recognition for its competency. We've improved our bond rating. We have created the reserves while weathering a COVID storm without disruption of services or layoffs. And the city has been a leader in the region, establishing and hosting South Sound Military Community Partnership, which deals with the impacts and support of JBLM. We had the first mental health co-responder with police in the region, so that's been replicated by others. We have maintained an allocation out of the general fund to human services. Edith mentioned the committee allocates every year to leverage rather than replicate human services in Lakewood. My favorite facilitated the construction of 50 Habitat for Humanity homes in Stillicum by utilizing federal funds to assist with infrastructure funds that routinely seem to disappear without any meaningful impact once they leave the government treasury. These had an impact. In Lakewood, we really haven't had a propensity or time for virtue signaling and resolutions on foreign policy. We focus on the core functions of local government that makes people's quality of life better. And on a purely personal note, it's hard for me to accept that it's been almost 50 years since I was a 21-year-old school board president tasked with designing a process for selecting the new school superintendent in Puyallup. I needed help. So I visited a member, a mentor, Dr. John Prince, who was then the director of the Business School of University of Puget Sound, a man who was in his early 80s and still teaching, who'd had a successful business career before he went to academia. The first thing he asked me was how well I was accepted by the other board members. I said I felt they gave me too much credit for ordinary things, ordinary ideas, surprised by simple common sense because I was so young. I told him I was afraid that as I progressed in my career and lost the advantage of youth, I would not be able to continue to exceed people's expectations. He paused, smiled, and in a deep voice that retained a Dutch accent from 60 years earlier, he said, "Ah, but Mr. Anderson, just wait until you're old. Then you can surprise them again." Well, I've waited, and I'm certainly getting old, and much to Nancy's chagrin, there may still be some surprises. Thank you all for coming and all the kind words.
Now, Don, if you'll join us for a photograph at the front? We're going to all come down for a photograph in the front with the proclamation, and then we'll have Nancy and the family come on up, and we'll get some photos there for the family. And then we'll come back adjourned quickly and have some refreshments. We want to present you with some flowers. Nancy is a token of our appreciation. Come on up here, and then you can get a photograph with your husband. For all those nights you've spent watching Bachelor or Bachelorette Alone
Garbage Out.
And taking the garbage out, we want to thank you for all of your time and for loniness, Don, for 16 years. You guys get to go get a photograph.
Yes.
Back for some refresh-